Okay, well, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I assume the planning board has a chance to look at the agenda. Thank you, Tom. You have a motion. Fifty-second. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
The unanimous. The approval of the minutes. I hope everyone's had a chance to read the minutes. Does any... Any motion approval? I'm sorry, did you make that motion?
Dan.
Dan, thank you.
Second.
Second. Sarah, it sounds like? Any further discussion? Approval of the minutes. Allops in favor? Aye. Nice to have it. Okay. New business. The Worry Hut watershed landslide study results. Say that 10 times fast. Jennifer Bauer. Was it Gerald? Do you want to introduce our guest?
I'll just introduce Jennifer Bauer and Stephen Fulmer. I think most of you know them. They've been here and have done a couple of presentations for the planning board on landslides and the impact of landslides. On the county, both for archaeologists have done quite a bit of work. This study was funded through a grant made available to the southwestern Resource Conservation District through the southwestern Planning Commission. So they've been able to do the basically Phase One of the landslide study at the Worry Hut watershed. This watershed was selected for the landslide study because of the sizes of watershed, the development activity in that area around Holloway, and the fact that it contained a variety of types of property, a lot of which were similar to other properties in the county to the extent that any one place in Jackson County is similar to any other. Jennifer and Stephen provided this presentation to a crew of about a month ago. It was sponsored by Water, the Watershed Association of the Tuckassee G River. And there was a good presentation and felt it would be good for the planning board to hear the landslide study and the landslide issue. It's come up a number of times in the discussions before the planning board. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer and Stephen. And again, questions from the planning board are welcome. This is great information, I think, for those of you from the public who are here also. And I'll turn, I think I can turn one section of the lights off so the presentation will be more visible.
This is a copy of the brochure that we had made to hand out to homeowners, whoever generates, I mean, introducing to the tri-letting community all night. But this is just a zoom-out view of the watershed.
And before Jennifer starts, we'll say that she'll email me this presentation. It'll be on the planning department website.
All right. I don't want to have my back to having one either. So I'm going to try it this way. And if I need to move, then let me know. Thanks, Gerald and planning board, for inviting us to come speak about the project that we've been working on. We, Gerald, gave a good introduction to this project. But I wanted to first start with just what is the purpose of landslide mapping, anyway? For many of you who may not be familiar with landslide inventory mapping, one of the purposes is just to increase awareness of what's out there, what's going on in our county, what can we find by looking around and seeing what's going on. Now, with this increased awareness, people can then make more informed decisions about the way they use their land or about protecting water quality, protecting their inhabitants, or being safe, protecting public safety. These maps also indicate where a site-specific evaluation is required. They aren't saying anything specifically about one property or another. They just say, here is where we found some things, here is where you may need to hire someone to take a closer look at what's going on on your property. How many of you are aware of the North Carolina Geological Survey's landslide mapping program? Many of you? Just to give a little bit of background, the North Carolina Geological Survey had a landslide hazard mapping program that started after the hurricanes of 2004 and lasted until June of 2011. And at that point, the program lost its funding. After that, Stephen and I knew that this landslide mapping information was really important to the people of western North Carolina, so we decided to start our own firm and offer the same service. While we were with the Geological Survey, we mapped Macon, Buncombe, Watauga, and Henderson Counties. Since then, we have completed mapping in Haywood County in a small watershed in the Jonathan and Richland Creek watershed, and then also in the Worry Hut. We have done the inventory mapping. Today, I want to talk to you a little bit about the process that we used during this mapping, the course of this mapping, the results that we came up with, and then what happens next. So I'll start with just the process. Gerald did a good introduction of why we chose the Worry Hut. For those who aren't familiar with this area, Worry Hut watershed includes a couple of the other watersheds, Kane Creek and Locust Creek as well, and a portion of the Tuckassee G. This straight line right here, that's the airport, the eastern edge of the airport, and it goes up to the ridge line and then down, almost to where 281 comes into 107. The first phase is the phase that we completed during this project, and that was the landslide inventory, which also included an education and outreach component, because we know how important it is that the people in the community understand what's going on. And one of the presentations we gave to the planning board a couple of years ago, I guess, was the introduction of this type of program. We had stakeholder meetings so that people in the community could be aware of what was going on. Our first stakeholder meeting included people from the county, from academia, from... We were hoping to have more input from the other parts of the community that weren't represented, like the real estate board, the building community. Unfortunately, people from those communities couldn't make that meeting. But those are... We wanted to reach all the stakeholders, anyone who could benefit from using this information. So we're trying to continue that outreach effort, and this meeting is one of those. As part of the education outreach, we handed out the brochure that the planning board members received, just so that we could introduce the project to the people that we were talking to. We did a lot of knocking on doors when we were walking around in this community, and we wanted to give the people we were talking to something that they could take a look at and understand what this project was all about and have some resources so they would have our name and contact information about the county or about this project. Moving on from the stakeholder meetings, the first step in landslide inventory mapping is it's a computer exercise. We call it remote sensing. What we did was we took a look at several different vintages of aerial photos to see if we could see where landslides had happened just from the aerial photo view. This picture here on the left is a picture of the 2013 photos that Google has on its website. We were fortunate that Google had these photos taken after all of the rains that we had last year. So many of the landslides that happened last year showed up on these photos. Like in this picture, you can see where the soil is kind of more exposed, it's more tan in this area rather than along the sides. This is actually a landslide that we then drove up this road and checked out and collected information on it. That's kind of how we would use these aerial photos to help us target areas that we needed to look. And this county, we actually ended up driving almost all of the roads that we could, so just to try and catch any of those 2013s that we couldn't see on the air photos. We also use the LiDAR digital elevation models, and these are elevation models that are created when an airplane flies over the... or some kind of aircraft flies over the land, shoots lasers down at the ground, receiving millions of data points of elevation that are tied to a GPS coordinate with lat and long, so that we have really accurate, a really accurate picture of what the topography looks like. This is an example of what a portion of the topography or the digital elevation model produced from that data looks like, which is really helpful when you're mapping landslides, because you get a really good picture of what the land looks like. A lot of the landslide features, the larger landslide features, you can actually see in this LiDAR topography, and we were using that to map those larger-scale features. After the remote sensing portion of the project, we then went out into the field. And I want to show you some examples of the typical types of landslides that we saw when we were out there. And one of them is an embankment failure or a fillslope failure. And this is an example of one of those. You can see the shoulder along the edge of this road has started to drop down, and in part of it, it's completely failed. And when I say completely failed, it's turned into what we call a debris flow, where the soil has gotten so saturated that it can't hold the water anymore, and it actually starts flowing down the slope like a thick liquid. So this is kind of a combination of the debris flow flowing down, and then a portion of it has just slid, debris slide, where it's staying intact in one block but just slid down, having completely broken up. In this example, when we were out there, we noticed that there was a home right down below this draw. So we thought, well, there were some heavy rains coming in, we needed to let someone at the county know. So we contacted the county emergency manager and the Soil and Emergency Control Department and let them know, and they went out and talked to the people who live down slope, just in case something happened. These people would be aware that there's this package of material up here that looks like it might still be capable of failing completely and going on down the slope. We wanted everyone to know what was the case, so that they could make their own decisions how many heavy rains. Another type of landslide that we often see are cut failures. And these are just failures in road cuts. I'm sure you all have seen them as you've driven some of the roads around the county. This is just an example of one that's already been vegetated earlier. We also mapped what we call the subsidence points. And these are areas where a portion of the roadway, or sometimes it was just the shoulder, could be sinking down a little bit, but it hasn't failed completely. And we thought it was important to map these areas, because these are the landslides that haven't happened yet. They're just kind of thinking about it, or a portion of it is starting to show signs of instability, but it hasn't gone all the way. These are the ones that can be repaired before they become the really expensive landslides that damage property. We also use the LiDAR as well as our field work to identify areas that we call landslide deposits. And these areas are where we have large accumulations of unconsolidated rocks and soil that have accumulated over hundreds or thousands or hundred thousands of years. We don't know how long, but we just know that they are there, and they were there because the landslide put them there. You can see the outlines of these in yellow here. And we've had years of experience that has helped us to identify these features remotely and then go check them in the field. We like to map these because where landslides have happened in the past can sometimes indicate where they may happen again, but also they are areas where if you modify them, if you were, say, to cut out the bottom part of it or the toe of the slope, because some of them are unconsolidated, they don't stick together very well. If you cut that slope too steeply, they can start moving again. So they're just areas to increase awareness of where landslides have happened and where you need to be careful if you're going to modify them. Here's another example of a cut failure, and this is one that was an example of a rock slide that has happened in what we call ultramafic rock. So it is... There's some talc. Are you guys familiar with talcum powder? You know how slick that is? Well, imagine trying to keep a slope up in something that's that slick. It's really difficult, and sometimes it ends up looking like this. So there are areas of talc in Jackson County, and we saw several landslides that happened in areas around the talc. We also encountered some other types of bedrock that seem to have a little bit more instability associated with them. One of them was an amphibolite type of bedrock, which makes that really ochre-red, really bright red, silty soil that gets, it seems like it's almost fluffy when it weathers into a soil. There are a lot of modified slope failures that we saw in that, around and around those amphibolite areas. When we collect data, we are using a digital database. So it's a database that we've got on our computer and we carry around with us. While we were mapping, we decided that we wanted to be able to give people an idea of the areas where we felt just a great opinion on where things might move or the potential of them moving in the future. And if they did move, what would be the impact to public safety or... And then also what would be the impact of water falling? So we came up with these tables or these columns in our database. And the first one shows if we thought that the landslide had the potential for high, moderate, or low future movement, because it looked like it may still fail. The second, the safety impact potential, shows if it does fail, is there a high, moderate, or low chance of impacting public safety? This can help prioritize which ones seem to be fixed first. And then the same thing for water impact, high, moderate, or low chance of the water being impacted if this thing does fail. Also a way to prioritize which areas might need to be repaired first if funding for that does become available. During the course of our mapping, we encountered some citizens that... a site where the homeowners started noticing some cracks after all the rains that we were having last year. And this is actually a photo from the homeowner. This crack ran through their embankment, their parking area, basically, right near their foundation, and then down their parking area, and then along the other side of it. And it started just moving down. And unfortunately, they, as they were having help digging it out, finding what's going on, they found trash and styrofoam, trees, all kinds of things buried in this type of slope. And this is really heartbreaking to me, that someone, whoever built this, would think that that was okay and that it wouldn't fail. And now these people have to deal with this issue, and they... This is their retirement home. This is where they wanted to live out the rest of their lives, and now they have to deal with this issue. And unfortunately, it's affecting their foundation, and so it's not just their parking lot, it's their entire home. These are the types of things we're hoping with increased awareness that we can prevent. This is a photo, the aerial photo of the area. Here's a home, and the purple lines here show where the cracks were along the side. When we took a larger look out at the LiDAR signature, it looks like this potentially may be a larger-scale landslide feature. We aren't sure. We do know that there's a smaller landslide down here at the bottom, but there is a signature that this may have moved at some point in the past. Just an area to be careful if you're building in. Here's another example of a homeowner who has been battling a landslide for quite a while, and she bought the home, actually. The toe of the slope was up against the back of the house, and she said, okay, well, I'll just remove this material from the back of the house and that'll be okay. Well, with all the rain that's happening, the slope has continued to fail down, and she's had to clean it out multiple times. You can kind of see the scarpe or the area at the top of the slope where things are starting to separate. It's above, it's about 100 feet from the back of her house. Here's a closer view of that. And we saw internal scarps all along through there, so this entire package of soil is just creeping down. She's tried to remove the water from it, but she doesn't necessarily have the financial capabilities to really stabilize this the way it needs to be, because that could be $100,000 or so. So she was looking for any help she could get, and we could give her some opinions on what we thought, just simple things she could do, try and get some of the water off the slope and try and stabilize it as much as she could without an engineered fix. We saw up in the headscarf area, we saw a map record of springs coming out that were quarter-sized, just water pouring out of them. So this entire slope is just filled with water, and water is one of the biggest lubricants for landslides. If you've got this type of water, it's really difficult to stabilize it unless you get the water off this slope. So what... So the results. What did we find? Well, here's the map that the planning board has, and you can see it on the website when Gerald posted it. The dots show where we mapped landslides. In the entire watershed, we found 37 landslides. Nine of those are on natural slopes, so slopes that were not modified by humans. 28 of them were on modified slopes, so cut failures or embankment failures. These 28, those are the ones that we can prevent with proper evaluation, design, construction, and maintenance of the areas of water from drainage around those areas. We found three actively moving landslides, and six of them in the area have the high potential for future movement. So those are the ones that need to be taken care of, especially if they have public safety, if there's a public safety impact if they do continue to fail. In the watershed, we found 10 subsidence locations. Nine of those have a high potential for future movement, and those are the yellow dots, just kind of urgency. And we found 116 of those ancient landslide deposit areas, covering 660 acres of the watershed. And those are the mustard-colored polygons you can see kind of in the, well, in the drainages. Because the rocks, the bedrock is complex in this area, we did bring in some geological maps to show where the different bedrock layers are, and these are maps done with funding from the USGS, not any of the work that we have done. But the ultramafic rocks I was talking about, those are outlined here in green. That's where sometimes you find the talc or the dunite. You may have heard of the olivine mines in this area, kind of in the... Little Creek area. And then the brown, this is the amphibolite. And you can see all the triangles, those are all the landslides that we mapped. So there is kind of a cluster of them up near this amphibolite, some around the ultramafics, and then these are around the airport. That's a good story. I won't get into this. So what comes next? Now we have this inventory. What do we do? Well, the first step is to try and distribute this information publicly somehow, and perhaps you as the planning board can help us figure out how we do that. How do we let... How do we get this out there for people to use? If that's what we want to do with it. We want to continue the education and outreach, because we feel like this information is no good unless people use it. And we'd like, at some point, to continue mapping the rest of Jackson County, doing the inventory, and then moving into the susceptibility map phase of it, where we can show areas where landslides may start and where they may go. I'll give you an example of the susceptibility map that we just did for Jonathan and Richland Creek in Haywood County. This is a zoom out of the entire... These are the two watersheds that we've mapped. And the areas in purple, which kind of show up as red, are where natural debris flows might start. And this is a model that we have put together based on where we have found landslides during the course of our work, as well as when we were with the Geological Survey. And then there's also a component showing where natural debris flows might travel. And then the third component is where what we call slope construction caution areas that are over 20 degrees or 36.4%. And we like to package them all together so that people are aware of the areas that where natural failures may start, where they may go, and then where we find typically find failures on modified slopes. So I'll show you guys a zoom in of this, so you get a better idea. The purple areas are those areas at the upper part of the slope where we feel or that where the model shows natural debris flows might start. And this is based on the topography and some other statistics that we pulled out from where landslides have started in our database. Then the green tracks or the green words you see going down the drainages, those are showing where debris flow starts in one of the purple areas up at the top of the slope, where is it going to travel down slope, so that people who live down at the valley know if they live down slope from one of these areas that might fail up slope. And then the yellow is the slope construction caution areas, where it's showing all the slopes over 20 degrees or 36.4%. We chose that because that's where we found over 97% of the modified slope failures that we have mapped. The original brown surface was deeper than 20 degrees or 36.4%. So we're showing on this map, if you're planning on constructing or living in one of these areas, be careful. Make sure you use proper techniques to construct and to design, to maintain. That's really what these maps are about, is just providing information so that people know where they need to take those extra steps to protect themselves and their own investments. Oftentimes, when I give these talks, people get percents and degrees of slopes confused. So I threw in this slide just to try and... Percents or ratios. So when I say 20 degrees, it's between 21.8 and 18.4, so somewhere around here, just 36.4% or 2.7 of 1. So if that incline helps you imagine how steep that is, here's background. I don't know if you guys were interested in hearing a little bit about the estimates that we put together for Gerald for mapping the rest of the county or for doing the susceptibility mapping for the Worry Hut watershed. I did include some of that here. What I sent Gerald was to map the rest of the county, to do the inventory, would be $79,000, would take about a year. To do the susceptibility maps for the rest of the county would be $79,000 as well, and that would take about six months or so. If you're interested in doing just a test case like Haywood County, like we've done in Haywood County, and you just want to see what it looks like for the Worry Hut watershed, we put an estimate together for that, for the susceptibility map, and that's around $10,000. And that would include the susceptibility maps, like I just showed you. We'd want to put together a user's guide, or we would, so that people knew how to use the maps, if they're like that's an important component, an educational brochure to simplify things and let people know what these maps are talking about. We feel education is really important to try and... What am I trying to say? Squelch any misinformation or misunderstandings about the maps. That's a survey that may have been the case for why we lost funding when we were with the state, and we're trying to hang it back up. And we also want to include two stakeholder meetings and then conversations about distributing the data and training people on how to use it. That's what that $10,000 would cover, literally. So again, just the purpose of landslide mapping is just to increase awareness, give people information to make informed decisions, and to show them where they need to. Have a site-specific evaluation done by someone who knows what they're looking for. by someone who knows what they're looking for. Thank you for your time.
Can we take questions from the board?
Sure. And I'll ask Stephen Miller, my partner, to help me.
Sure.
He can answer that. Yes.
Curious one thing. Did you say you had 28 of the situations where you don't map? Of those 28, how many were below the grade? In other words, below the, sort of the ground you're looking at? In other words, downhill slope? In other words, a prepared block?
Like a fill slope? I think it was about half and half. Which was surprising, we didn't... And it seems like that statistic stays constant, but yeah, we had about half as many, or the same number of cut failures as fill slope failures.
Was there any way that y'all could determine whether or not that was incorrectly done? Below the slide area, in other words, like you were saying, the trash in the yard, you know, that you broke down, digged up, sold out. Is there any way in your work that you've broken it down that far?
That's beyond the scope of this type of project. And that's part of why we say have a site-specific evaluation done, because then you can go in and do the drilling if you need it to, or trenching or whatever.
I would, I would argue that if your fill slope failed, something's gone wrong.
Yeah.
On the blood, we don't know if it's that. It could have been a gap, just, you know, given the maintenance, because that was prepared or unclawed corners. But somewhere or something was not ideal.
And we do have notes in our database too. Whenever we did see drainage that looked like it had run over the road or something like that, we, we include that in our remarks.
Within that same set of data that we just discussed, for the ones that did fail, did you notice any significant discrimination criteria of what the downhill slope of the fill was? Or was the fill done and then wound up with a slope like this coming off of the fill? Or a slope like this coming off the fill? Were there any distinctions among those kind of characters?
We, we did measure the modified ground slope when we, or the original ground slope, as best as we could tell what was the slope of the ground before they cut and filled. And we include that data in our database, but that's where the statistics were used for that slope.
Is it possible the speakers could use amplification? The board as well as the consultants?
We can repeat the question.
Yeah. So he was asking about the, the original ground slope below a fill slope, what, how steep it was, and if we noticed any, any correlation with the steepness of the slope and the chance of failure. And we did record that information whenever we could. Sometimes the ground was too modified that we couldn't really estimate what the original ground slope was. But we used the statistics to come up with the slope construction caution areas. And I, I don't have detailed statistics in my head, but that's where we, we did our statistics. And 97% of all those modified slope failures, both cut failures and embankment failures, happened on slopes that were steeper than 20 degrees or 36%.
Yeah, well, my question, if you could hear me. My question was not only what you just answered, but what was the actual slope of the fill?
Oh, the actual fill.
You could prepare the fill, and you could have a downhill slope that looked like this, or you could prepare the fill and walk off and leave the fill looking like this, which you're, obvious you're going to have problems to do that. Was there a discriminator there?
We, we did also record that data. I don't know the statistics on that.
We can look that up.
I know obviously there's usually a correlation because on steeper ground you can't have, you know, really shallow fill slopes, because they're just not real. And we feel the, the most important distinction is what the slope of the original ground was versus the fill slope. But, but yeah, that would be good.
Because obviously that becomes a concern with regard to road construction on the fill side, as well as preparing a path, you know, for a home construction. It's what, obviously one of the most benign things would make that slope as long as you could possibly make it, make sure it's well impacted, et cetera, et cetera, drainage and all those other things.
One of the issues with that statistics, and why it might be a little bit misleading, is because we don't know the construction of that fill slope. You could have a steep fill slope that was, you know, put in on a flat bend who were packed in layers, and it could be a lot more stable than a shallow fill slope that was just loosely, you know, piled over.
You mentioned that it may have been a misinterpretation of the maps or the process that led to state funding being removed for these studies. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about that for the sake of those of us who might like to advocate for the return of that funding?
She asked me to speak more about the potential for misinformation or misunderstanding of the maps, and that leading to the funding of the program at the state being cut. I think some of it was that there were a lot of questions about, will these maps be used for regulations? Will these maps affect my property values? How accurate are these maps? Or some of the others. Those, I think those were some of the main ones. And I think some of it was that they thought that if your area was in, if your home was in one of those red or the purple areas, that it's meant you couldn't build there. Rather than learning more about it, just saying that if you do, you need to be careful or do it properly. So that was one of them. And I think the property value question, we actually went back and interviewed people from the counties that had had those maps for years. And those people that we spoke to, we spoke to real estate agents, we spoke to people in the planning department and the, but the tax department. And none of them said that the values had been dropped because of the maps. It was more that the market tanked at that time. So I think that's some of it. And part of what we do, just as a consulting group, we do a lot of talks to real estate agents and other organizations. And what I'm finding, and what we're finding is that with more understanding, they're starting to see the stakeholders who might not have been at the county, in the county organization at the time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think that part of the issue was with the staff that we had at the, at the survey, and kind of the main focus was trying to get the landslide hazard maps out as fast as we could, we didn't have dedicated personnel to help with the actual public outreach and education of those maps. And so we released the maps at the survey, but were otherwise largely silent as a voice to advocate or talk about the maps. And what ended up happening was that other people, you know, opponents, were the main voice that, that people were hearing and that were, you know, in the newspapers or talking to their legislature, legislators, and things like that. And so they kind of controlled the discussion. And by the time it became apparent what was going on, it was a little bit, you know, too late. And so that's kind of why we really do think that the public outreach and education is such an important part, because, because even some of the groups that initially opposed the state program, after we told them more about it and they find out more and we give them presentations, a lot of times they'll, they'll come full circle and they'll actually say, oh, you know, that is important information, we'll give you that. And so that, that's kind of where, how we're trying to approach it this time.
Well, your information to me is very important. I lived in Macon County for quite a few years, and I used to deliver mail out on Hick Street. And I imagine you guys remember all that off the top of your head. And so, you know, that type of awareness can help prevent that. I think 15 homes were destroyed, a lot of people killed, several injured. Very interesting.
And that's one of the landslides that started the funding for the program.
Are there any avenues for funding for homeowners that are affected through a landslide? That you know of?
The question was, are there any avenues for homeowners that have been affected by a landslide? And I don't know of any. And actually, the people that we have spoken to have asked us, do we know of any funding that can help? But I don't know of anything right now.
In the, in the counties that have maps completed, like Macon and Bunkin, do you find that builders and developers are looking at them to, to, to help plan where they are or not, are or not, are, are not going to build? Are they consulted prior to construction?
In Bunkin County, the maps are used for their slope ordinance to trigger a, a global stability analysis by a geotechnical engineer. So yes, in the cases where it's within one of those high hazard zones and moderate hazard zones, which is what we call it at the state, then yes, those are consulted. In Macon County, I know that the, the planning department uses them. I don't, I don't think they base permits on them or anything. So I'm not sure that there's as much awareness about them in Macon County. I know that there are consulting firms though that work for the developers of these large-scale developments that do use the maps. So I think it's, there's still the need for awareness out there. I don't know that everybody knows about them. So in some cases, yes, in some cases, no.
So I've got a two-part question. The first is like, for like the Worrihat area, for example, what percentage of all that land is, has a slope of over 20 degrees or 36.4%? Just as a whole, when we look at it? If you're looking at it as a hat, probably half or more? Three quarters? You know?
Yeah, I don't know. We haven't gotten to that phase, and I guess we, we haven't created that layer. It would be pretty easy to do if we don't have it.
Because, because the one percentage you gave out was 97%, 98% of all the failures that you saw were that that slope were greater. So if you were king for the day, if you were king for the day and we're looking at, hey, if you had to make a recommendation on building on a, a slope that's at that percentage or greater, what would, what would you recommend? Would you say there should be an engineering requirement that has to happen on those? Just being under advisement? What would be your recommendation?
I think that, I think there are four critical components to building on slopes that are, can be front of landslides. The first is evaluating it to see what you're building on, first of all. Is it really loose soil or is it really hard rock? And I think that makes a difference. So evaluation, and to see if there's anything moving already or not. And then the design, I think, is important. Even just to have an engineer go out there and say, oh, you don't need to worry about it. Or, okay, yeah, let's take a look at this. And then the proper construction of it, that's critically important. If you design it and they don't build it to that design, then it's no good. And then the fourth is the maintenance of the slope and the drainage around it. Because many, many of the embankment failures you saw are just where culvert's plugged up on one side of the road, and the water flows over that road, and then that slope wasn't meant to hold the water. So I think it's, those four components are really critical.
I, I don't know for Jackson County, but for the Haywood County project that we did, I think it was something like 53% of the area was over that 20 degree. So I don't know how that would prepare, but just to give you an idea.
Just to broaden the question we did beyond what Scott did. Obviously, based on, well, that particular chart, if you were going to build a spot eight, and even if it met certain criteria that would cause one to take more caution and possibly go through the process that you just described. It's also important to know what's above you and what's below you before you build on that spot. To me personally, that's why mapping of that nature right there would say, if I'm going to build even down in one of those green areas, well, that's a float area. And I need to be aware of the fact of what's the stability of what's above me. And, and that's where I think it could get a little interesting if, if you wanted to go on somebody else's property and try to characterize their property because of what may happen there that would affect you on your property. And, and if you run into any issues like that of where it would be important to basically characterize something that was above or below you? Pete Craig was a prime example of that.
Absolutely. Did everyone here's question? He asked, is there a, or what are my thoughts on needing to characterize what's going on up, up, up above you or down below you? And one of the other services that we offer as a consulting firm are these site-specific evaluations. And that's something that we do in almost every site evaluation that we do. We will have either the real estate agent contact the landowners on slope that we need to go on their property, or we'll contact them and say, we're doing this evaluation, we'd like to go up on your property and see what's going on. We haven't had anyone say, I don't want to know, it's on my property. So we haven't had, we haven't had any issues with that. And that's something that, when I mentioned the four critical components, that, and that would be part of the evaluations to see what's going on up slope, what, what could be impacting down slope or cut down to a down slope, as well as what's just on this property.
The flip side of that. If you gave green light to everything above you, the liability issue?
Yes, there's always that.
I mean, if y'all, I mean, if the county will just, you know, go ahead and do this, this thing. You know where I'm going with the question? The liability.
Of the person who's doing the evaluation? Yeah, there's always that. And we can't, we always say, we can't guarantee anything. We say, here's what we see today. Now, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. We don't know if people are going to build on it. It's a situation. We just say, here's what we see, and, and go with that.
Because the issue there would be whether what's above you or below you is a modified or unmodified slope at the time you make the evaluation.
Or showing signs of instability or not. Because today, it might not be cracked, and tomorrow it might be. Try. And the owners or the people that we've talked to, they recognize, we can't predict landslides. They're asking us to, they're just asking us to tell them what's there.
And again, that susceptibility study was $79,000?
For the entire county, exactly?
For the entire county.
Yeah, and one thing about the susceptibility maps is that they are based on what we find in the inventory, because we like to tie them to statistics that we gather when we're mapping the landslide. So we could just, I don't know, we would not feel comfortable doing susceptibility maps without having them in the inventory. Do you want them to?
I think you're, it may not have been quite a rhetorical question, but I'll make it an actual question. With regard to the education and outreach part, i.e. Worrihat having been done in the Russian County, not having been done, what can be done in terms of education and outreach to people who live in that specific area as an example, people who live in that specific area as an example, since that's been done? How can they be made aware of that? I think that's what you're asking. You know, it does, you could take the data, put it on the shelf, let it get in the dust, and then not have it utilized in some procedural way, as you discussed for Bunkham County, for example, of a data set that is to be reviewed prior to action AP or C occurring with regard to development. I guess that's where we as a planning board, be a Gerald or whatever, would need to somehow implement that as a part of the permitting process, as well as just general education to the public, which obviously a meeting like this is and are other public venues, to make sure that, using Bunkham County again as an example, that that data becomes something that is utilized as a part of the process, whenever there's a ground disturbance to occur, you know, development to occur, something like that. So does that sound like something that could be done here as part of that process?
Certainly provide the information, make it available, with those people, do more outreach, make their proper ways, I'm sure their locations in the watershed, post office and other locations where put this information.
In some ways, our steep slope ordinance addresses this, because over a certain slope, there is a site-specific analysis required, or even for an individual home on an existing individual lot or new development, a subdivision on a steep slope, that a geotechnical analysis is required as part of the subdivision process. So we have some protection built in. What I need to do is look more closely at our steep slope ordinance, because right now, I'm still confused as to what is in the existing one, or somewhat confused about what's in the existing ordinance and what was in the ordinance we're proposing. I do know that there are requirements for site-specific analysis for an individual homeowner's steep slope above 40 percent, and for any, for a development of a subdivision above 30 percent, I think that's the threshold for the development. I think there's slightly, and I'm not sure that even that might have been confused with what we're proposing. So I'll get back, I'll provide information on that, and even put a little state question and answer, et cetera, statement on our website for those in the audience to let, you know, what protection is available now for the steep slope ordinance.
And my question was not about, not necessarily about the county using them, but just perhaps providing a vehicle for them to be used, like Bunkham County posts these maps on their GIS, their parcel GIS server. And all of this data is in GIS, that's how it's meant to be used. So some kind of online map viewer, or perhaps the opt-in map viewer that the regional councils that keep you on it, or some other kind of map viewer that's available to the public. So it wouldn't have to be something that's necessarily used by the county during the permitting process, just available to people through some kind of web map server.
Might want to explain to the audience, at least those who don't know what a GIS is.
Sure. When I say GIS, I'm talking about the Geographic Information System, or it's basically an online map that you can scroll around and zoom in and out, kind of like-
Tax map.
Yeah, it's the tax maps, those are GIS maps. And the data can just be one more layer added to those. We find that that makes them more user-friendly.
Any more questions from the board? We sure thank you.